We should have.
No. No. Uh.
Yeah, I'll say.
We're all sick of this. I'm here. But I'm already sick of this.
Amen, brother. Well, it's appropriate that we're talking about the sick pool then.
Why you coming be out there?
It's a big old.
What are they doing up there?
Probably auction playing up.
Yeah, it's first Tuesday of the month.
What are we talking about?
That's what our meeting is about. So it's appropriate that you would be.
Yep.
Same as well. Sit down here, smile. You don't, you don't sit up there and tell them how to get it.
She always plays so. And Jesus, so.
Once mentioned something.
You get up there?
My little Jesus. Never known that one of his hands does it.
There today when those.
He was the sweat.
All right. What's uh? What's Mr. Curtis lights then?
Lots camera action.
Well, as a senior member of the mistress court with one year and three days. I call this meeting to order at ten o'clock A M.
Congratulations on your one year and three days.
Yes, excellent.
I'll even make it that long.
So. Today in attendance.
Yeah, this is far.
They'll be here in ten minutes.
Are we recording or?
No. I don't, I don't know that we're recording. Um, and I don't think, I don't, we'll, we'll record.
She's fixing to record it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, family, there's no more.
That one I gave y'all was the shooting. Would they want to change the policies here this?
Don't you work for Walmart?
Yes.
Oh, that's where I saw you the other day.
Oh, you're thirty one years old now?
You don't look a day older than thirty two.
The one what has the turtle upside. And why is based on. Yes, there were one restart after the first year to have. When you reach year one can move up to eighty hours. So basically, it will show from the front of it. And when we got up past the, to the five years, I did the balance the way that we had it. Our county was already doing it because it actually was more beneficial to the employees to continue to be that way than some of the other policies that they had presented when they came into the workshop. Cause at some point we were taking some away from people. It's not idea we're even there.
What about taxpayer?
Is there, has there been an analysis related to the taxpayer cost?
Not bad. I don't, it's the same thing y'all did when I arrived, you know, they were gonna come talk about. Then it just got, I'm gonna create some, so I did.
From, from your, from your vast knowledge, from your vast wealth of knowledge, would you assume that there is or is not a, a component of cost to the taxpayer for additional vacation days?
Uh, well, I don't think there's an additional cost as long as our departments are staying staffed. Then we do allow vacation and with our benefits that we have, hopefully this is a business that will help us retain more employees to get past the one year and two year mark, cause that's kind of where we're losing.
Is that what, is that your analysis, uh, Mr. Kenny?
I agree with what she is saying.
I didn't even understand it, so.
That's how, that's how a person stays married. That's how a man stays married. I agree with what she said.
Can y'all come up here, sit with me?
Can you? Uh, are, are y'all under the, are y'all under the impression that this would, uh, would, uh, greatly assist with the retention or do you believe that it's a small matter?
Well, you jumped from. Currently, we don't. You have to be here for five years before you get up to eighty hours of vacation. Actually, we jumped from sixty four to ninety six at your fifth year of service.
So you, you.
So it is a great.
Which, which one of those is what we're at?
We currently are on this one.
Okay.
Uh, and.
This is what they're asking for.
No, no, this is our current one and this is what they're asking.
Okay.
So right now, if, you know, you, you gotta be here five year before you get eighty hours. But the change is after your, yeah. So, so the, the change would be one to four years, you get ten days, ten working days, that's eighty hours of vacation. So it would be a substantial benefit to those.
The one to four years where.
Yeah, one to four years. Yeah.
And then the, the ones that go on down past that starting with ten. We all stay, I kept it all the same.
At one point this kind of change over and, and the, uh, and our existing. So a hundred and sixty hours is twenty years, so that's basically the same. Fifteen hours is basic, fifteen years is, is, uh.
The same.
Same. So it looks like the real change is on our, our newer, yeah, our newer employees.
But that's where we need.
It's what we need. Yes, that's what we need.
What's happening is they're, they're anywhere up to forty years, but they, uh, just been five.
Well, they.
No, they'll start.
Two years is.
They start with a little more.
Two years is eight fifty, you know, after their first full year, they get eighty hours.
Yeah, but that's only four hours, four years.
With the new policy, when they have their. You, you start at zero, you, when you start, you're at zero.
That's right.
So we're not front loading it. We're not front loading it then.
Well, we kind of.
On anniversary date, currently they front load the accruals, the first day of the month following their anniversary date.
Right, but no matter how you slice it, after somebody has been here for one full year, they can take two weeks of vacation.
Correct.
Not four years, one year, after one year, they can, they take two more hours. So it's a, it's a, it's a real bump.
Big jump.
Those that are in their first four years. In their first.
And that's sort of, those are the ones that we can't keep replaced. If, if you really wanna look at the trend.
What's the numbers on that? Like, I mean, we're losing.
We started here for. Who we started here for?
Yeah, my department's been good this year. This year since it changed, since the commissioner changed, it's gotten pretty stable.
You already been pretty good in that, boy, so many months even now.
That's right. And through the, the summer. So we're talking about the heat of the, of the day and, uh, and we haven't had a lot of turnover on the commissioner's side, so.
We have had less turnover in Rodney Bridge this year than we have about the, the entire time that I've been here. I don't have the numbers, but I know.
Well, we have to give, we'll give Brandon credit.
What you must remember this.
So. So I, I can see the, I can see the benefit with, with fewer costs. So makes sense to me that, that, uh, that making this change would, would benefit the, would benefit the departments that have newer employees. Is there been any feedback? Um, and maybe that would be something that we should do is we, we may get feedback from those departments that have longevity in their, in, in their groups, uh, and see if they're gonna be accept by the fact that people that.
There will be some get upset. There always is. Where would we? I didn't get it when I started. Right, but you weren't, you made more money now than when you started too, so.
So if you're here one year, you'll get four weeks and three days.
Really?
Well, you get, you get seventeen, fourteen days, seventeen days. How many days you get on holidays? Holidays.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So you potentially could take four weeks off. You'll have four weeks, four weeks off paid, pretty much.
The, uh, the fourteen days, that translates into three weeks. So you have five, basically five weeks of vacation.
Your first year, actually first year.
Holidays or rotation?
Holidays, I'm, I'm putting them together like, yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just playing devil's advocate cause I do it so well.
Pain to not work.
I just think about like how the public views it, you know, and if I were just looking at it and saying, are we overstuffed if we can give that many days off or can we do it less? I know that sounds crazy in government, but I'm just saying that, that's just how the public views it like.
Oh, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah.
Always here.
I know, I know this new generation that we live in is different than the old generation.
You are.
You know, we're living in a world where they have to have time out, you know?
They get to take naps.
Get like naps to have time out. I know it's different. I'm not making light of it. I am, but I'm not. That's just how it is. Like, it's hard to.
Or some of us do.
Yeah, I won't, I can't gear, I won't gear back. I'm just a dinosaur, but like. Uh, my neighbor always told me, he said, when I was six years old throwing watermelons in the field, he'd say, you ready to go to work on Saturday morning? I was watching cartoons and he'd say, you can either, you can either steal your way through life or work your way through life. Now, what are you gonna do? So that's my mentality is just work. He told me that a hundred times probably, probably every time I had to go pull watermelons, but. So I don't think like the rest of, a lot of people think. I, I wanna take care of our employees, but like, how many, are we gonna be doing this again next year? Well, I don't know. Like what, like we have a pretty good package here at the county. It's pretty good.
I agree with you.
And hardly ever hear anybody say, well, I'm really proud to work at the county. I, I think we got a great package. Most time people are, they don't say what they're thinking probably, but, um, you know, will it cost us any more money?
What, will it cost?
Not really anything. Production.
That.
We to go.
Okay.
I was thinking you were going by Angelina.
Uh, only took, I didn't change ours as.
The Angelina, uh, which is, uh, uh, one week for one year. After five years, they go to two weeks and then after just five years, they go to three weeks or heading more than.
I didn't go all the way down because ours was better after the beginning.
Well.
The one through four, with eighty hours, you not kept up technically same way with our. The Polk and the Angelina were the two that they had mentioned they liked the best.
Right.
But then when you looked at theirs. At the Angelina and the Polk, I did not change some of ours because we were already giving more than they're giving to longer term employees.
Right.
So I didn't, certainly didn't want to take anything away from what we have already approved for them to have.
Well, they were giving more than we already were saying.
Yes.
Anyway, so I, I did it.
It's our first few years.
Uh, Angelina, and that's where they have two weeks, uh, at the end of the first year.
Yes.
And then they give three weeks at the end of the fifth year. And then they give, uh, four weeks at the end of fifteen years of. Not one week at the end of the first year.
It's one week after.
One, right. And then two weeks after the first year.
On your one year anniversary, you would jump up to two weeks.
Correct, yes. That's, that's, that's what I did. And I put that together using the information you provided me. I appreciate you putting that all together and I created this pool I sell file.
That's fabulous.
Goes to and bears what, uh, what it costs us with the current plan per employee based on our current rate. And, uh, and again, it's not perfect because eight hours, it's based on eight hours and everything. I don't know, we got different, uh, situations with different people. But, uh, anyway, the, the difference in the cost, and again, we're not talking apples to apples, cause we have different things, but it's pretty close. Uh, it would add a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, a hundred and eight thousand dollars to the cost of the county. Yeah, it was, it really an additional five hundred and forty eight days off for county employees. That'd be a hundred and eight thousand and if you add three percent, uh, paying increase would be a hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty four dollars. So, uh, it will cost the county money, but the, the other, the other consideration too, when she got, uh, those departments that, that have limited personnel. That when one takes off, then simply enough says to fill in the comp time. And so paying, uh, comp time on top of, of the vacation time, so that's. And I, and I can, uh, I will take, I'll get, in fact, I'll send you there. So eventually, I'll, I'll present these numbers in there where you can see exactly what, what changes it will do to the ground in regard. But, uh, as far as it's having that benefit, I, I personally, uh, uh, I came from the private sector. We had seven paid holidays, uh, fourteen. And we had, uh, a vacation plan that was, wasn't as good as what the county currently offers. So, uh, you know, uh, and I understand we want to be competitive with other, uh, entities and other, uh, counties in our regard. But as you will see on Friday, I don't know, there's cost considerations that need to be taken to a panel. And can we afford it or not? So that, that's why I'm on that regard.
Well, that's one of the things we push. When we do onboarding for new employees is our benefits, including our holidays that are paid. And we give them a sheet that shows all of those things as, as she can get to have and holding her beans, you know, okay, yes. I get this, 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 and this, you know, so, so we do have a very good one and, and that's something that, I said, that we really try to push so they understand the additional benefits that they're getting. That some private sectors, yeah, you can get certain things, but I pay for private sector too. I'm, I would never, I came over here. I was very happy to see what benefits were offered.
Yes, ma'am. That's right. I worked in retail.
I know we had some people that were. Commissioned that in budget workshops. I wanted to present it and just get some numbers and see what y'all decided that we wanted to do.
All right. And, uh, did you get numbers for the, uh?
I didn't get any. Oh, I, I can't figure out how to do that.
You call up the, you call up the.
I called her up. It's just what she told me to do, Roxanne.
They provided us numbers to you, you know?
She didn't want to provide me numbers. She told me to do that little link.
So do you think, so you think the turnover in the first year or two is because they don't have no days off? You think that's what's causing it?
I don't think that that's the sole reason it's falling in. I think that a lot of it is, I think we may have some departments that their, their training procedures, they don't have standardized training procedures that maybe the supervisor should, should be the ones to create somewhat of like a reference guide for the new employees to have to follow, first expecting an employee to do it themselves. Unfortunately, they won't take your own notes or things that you think are key points, but there should be more standardized processes that they go through, you know, our, our jail, they have to go through certain things. They have to go through the required training and all the things and the physical things that they have to know, which you sign off on. And I believe when we have the other offices that may have ten or less employees. That we don't provide as consistent of training as we should for them to say, here's your training guide, here's what you use, here's what you're taking. Now take your notes and make it, I don't know. With it, I think that we could be too bad.
Where's the biggest turnover at? Just curious. Is that top sticker?
Our jail is our biggest. Sheriff's side has come way down. Our jail is still. But it's.
You know, when you first brought that, you didn't bring it to us. It was DA's office that brought this idea of front loading. Wasn't that right?
Yes.
My, my first thought was, my first thought was it was a little too heavy to ask for that much. Then I thought, you know, if you could, if you could front load two or three, a couple of days so that they could add those two days with one of those holidays that nobody else gets, and you could almost get a week out of that. You understand what I'm saying? You know, give you something to look forward to and you could plan for that and, you know, that the new generation needs time out, like, I get it. I mean, but like. I, I don't know, like our, like our pay skill is.
Doing, we add overall at the end of the year because it's based on accruals, you wind up with forty eight hours instead of forty. So we don't jump very much. I think that's where some of the gap was. But I see what you're saying. Yes, you could.
I understood that like the first year is a long year sometimes for them and I get that, especially out where we work at the heat, the heat will take them out. Sometimes, but like then I also thought about like what it was before, before, um, when I worked here before, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, whatever that was. Um, our expectations for our guys, they all had to have class A CDLs and that's all been lowered in my, over there where I'm at. Like half my guys don't have CDL license and the expectation is not real high and we've, the, the pay rate's pretty good. Y'all got the pay rate up. Yes. So, yeah, that's in our handbook, I think. So like, I just wonder sometimes like, if we're gonna go, if we're saying, okay, we're gonna give all this stuff, then our expectation probably should come up too. Like, people have the right to expect. You understand what I'm saying?
A lot of those things would be your departmental policy, that side of the regular.
Yeah.
I guess I do agree with the expectations. So we do have some department heads that have full employee handbooks when their employees within their department, but they have some off one on their expectation.
So are you talking about law enforcement? Is it our own law, our own policy or they use the county policy to score as vacation time?
They, no, they use, vacation time, everybody uses the same policy.
Okay.
But where he's talking about like, you know.
And how's it work law enforcement when they're on the? Eighty hour, uh, eight, eight, six hour. Do, do they still just get eight hours a day?
No, they, they can use theirs in whatever increments they want.
Okay.
Like if, if they were, uh, there's based on a fourteen day cycle. So there's.
No.
If that's eighty six.
That's accrued.
It accrues the same way.
Same way. With the forty hour.
So by the end of there, they may wind up only having to use seven hours if they work thirteen hours one day, fifteen hours one day, because they work very long shifts sometimes. So, but they can't go over the eighty six. Like if they wanted that full twelve hours and they had already worked over, they don't get that full twelve hours to put them over the eighty six. To, to, to move their budget, but who can't go for benefit. And that's something that the treasurer always has to go in and check every single payroll to be sure that, but anyone couldn't go over forty for the week with vacation.
Brandon here yet? There you go.
I, I think, uh, me personally, I always, the back of my mind, y'all bring it up. I I think uh me personally, I always, the back of my mind, y'all bring it up, always thinking of what the policies. Well, you don't think about that. So.
I think that's a great benefit.
Uh then I'm sorry, I was I didn't do uh vacation policy in sick pool.
In sick pool, we can talk about that. I know when we visited Brandon, you're looking more wanting to do the single contribution of somebody. Wanted to contribute directly to an individual. Haley would tack did not recommend that. Tonda looked over it just a little bit, but she really had a chance to look over the whole policy. So I did give y'all, did I give y'all the sick pool?
Can I ask you a question about that sick pool? Um related to whether or not there's a prohibition if I. If Mitch is not feeling well and he doesn't have any more sick time, can I just give him some of mine now?
That is what I sent to Haley and asked her because there is a government code on being allowed to have a sick leave pool. So it is available, but whenever I gave her the example of a person wanting to donate specifically to another person, well, she said. It's a big no. This opens county liability for discrimination and retaliation, claims by allowing employees to choose who gets sick time. This is not first, this is not a best practice and I do not recommend it.
So we would have to have a board that would be over that and.
You would, so that would prevent. Because you would own a sick leave pool means you would have to contribute into the pool to be able to receive from the pool.
And the board would not know who were to be anonymous.
Right, they would have to meet eligibility through the pool administrator. By pay having paperwork I created, I'm gonna put y'all to look at. I did add uh an additional paragraph in there or maximum number three will be used.
My gosh, it's a lot of reading.
It's a lot to create me too.
Does it have pictures or anything? I'm just kidding.
So from the examples, uh Karen Nelson, it took me an example from Pauplin County. And then I reached out to Smith County and had them send me an example into Hayes County and then them sending me an example. But kind of went through those and they were all very similar. Some of them were extremely long and some were just basic bullet pointed and took short, Hayes was very short. So I kind of went in between Pauplin Counties and Smith Counties because they gave a long certification. Basically, you have to be employed here for twelve months and have at least forty hours in your vein. You can contribute anywhere from eight up to forty, but it could not cause you to go down before forty in your balance. So if you had forty, you could contribute, you have to have forty-eight. And that was pretty common. I did put in the top of it that we uh follow the government codes that are included in that. And that's where some of these eligibility requirements come in.
This is front and back.
Also a section under enrollment. Because it is a government code that I didn't originally have in there. And I put a question mark on it and I thought I heard this one.
Well, it looks like a whole lot, but it's really not that bad, is it? Like. They're just some guidelines that we have to go by.
One of the big things is that eligible employees who have contributed to the pool during the current fiscal year. May be granted up to seven hundred and twenty hours or a maximum of one third of the balance of the pool. At the time of their request, whichever is less, that I had to add in there this morning. Because that's under the last section of the government code.
So nothing forces the employees to participate?
No. And we can only receive it if we participate.
When you said participate, I mean, you have. So typically the people that need the most use up all their sick time and don't have any to get to, correct? So they would not be eligible for it to receive that.
Unless they had been giving before they got sick.
Only during that fiscal year.
Yeah.
We can contribute, because I will be the only fault by in the year that you contribute to them. So basically, if you did something like this, I would recommend that we present it during our opening enrollment with our employees. Because those are the employees that are eligible for sick time.
So.
They can sign up at that time if they wanted to and it run concurrent with our budget year, just like our benefits.
So Joe Smith gets sick this year and he and uh with some catastrophic illness. And he's participated this year, so he can use some this year, but next year when he doesn't have any left, he can't participate next year.
Right, wow.
I don't like that.
Yeah.
That defeats the whole purpose.
You have to be able to donate into it to receive it is is that's all three of these policies that I looked at. It's the way that I've been meaning to be worried, but I mean.
Or have donated into them in the in the past and. At the beginning of catastrophic illness.
Yeah, that.
Cause that really defeats the purpose, you know, if you, of course. On the other hand, you can have somebody lender for five years, I think lending is a bad word, but I mean, you could have somebody. Continue to siphon off sick leave for, you know, five, seven years.
Well, if they're missing, then that we should be following FMLA along with these things as well because. If you can't use it to care for a family member now, sick leave pools are just for employees, it's not for.
That's right.
Family.
That's right.
Sure, so that that does change that, but FMLA is what anyone should be put on when they have a serious health condition. That is whether it's to care for themselves or a family member or.
But FMLA is unpaid, it just secures your job.
Secures your job for up to twelve weeks in a rolling calendar year. But most people need to be paid.
How much leeway does uh, how much leeway does the um department head have as far as administrative leave or something like that?
An elected official can pay administrative leave to their employee at how they see it's.
As long as it's in the budget, as long as it's budgeting.
Got that certification about two years ago.
Just but. This said, it defeats the purpose. But we don't have to follow whether we can have our judges to show what we want to do. So the best scenario that y'all had right there, and we can fix that.
Yeah.
I I just created something to start, I had a starting point to see where we want to go.
The other three have those restrictions in there, it's for a reason. And that reason most likely has to do with discrimination. If you don't have it in there, it takes so bad on legal issues. That is the way I perceive it as being explained to us.
But if I don't talk Jessica on this. Say you have an employee. Who is out weekly or whatever. They own their supervisor comes to them, tell Jessica. And it's anonymous, they come to the board, you don't give a name, we give, don't we do anything, we just tell this word, this situation. That prove you're dis, I don't know who it is. That way it takes so long. That help it out of it. I don't know, I think they've figured out, I think it's only I've had to make twice, but. With good employees, just bad luck. What it is.
On those times it's happened to you in the past, are these employees going to come back or or or?
Yeah, they haven't quit, they came back uh.
After whatever the issue was, was cured.
Yeah, no, they didn't quit their job, I mean, one's ongoing right now, but uh. They just they just ran out of sick time and they they don't get paid and but. You know, they didn't even spell about it, but it's got to be thankfully because I've had it, I've got one employee. That's got three hundred and eighty hours of sick time. And he's like, uh. He's he's old school, he doesn't miss a day, he's coming with the home, you know, he's doing the work, but uh. And then we had this other guy who had a severe. Severe dealing around sick time and and my guy's like, hey, you know, I I've got plenty of sick time, I want to give it to him. And I even asked Jessica if he could do it, but we can't.
Yeah, we need to do something. I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah, it's what I did from the official's office to the post office and over the top for about hundred hours. And I wanted to give it away, had a gentleman over at the sheriff's office who really needed it. And we're gonna do it.
I mean, I think, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, I guess some departments have good morale, some departments have bad, but mine's good and and ours good. You know, I think maybe the employees look pretty good and pay, you know, these people helped me out and. Maybe me another Detroit or a incident for them to stay if we're going back, but I don't know, that's.
And Tonda did say that she has been part of one of those before when they did that at state level. To donate individual to an individual. This morning.
Well, it appears we need a little bit more legal research in that regard, because the one, the one thing is. Kind of defeats purpose if you have to be a contributor of the plan in order to participate in the plan. Because a lot of people just can't can't contribute or have it, and it shouldn't. Should be, I don't know if that's something that that we have way around that regard.
Just, was that like y'all just?
That's just, that's the way those three policies that I've. Counties I've looked at, that's the way that they have their job, and it wasn't, I couldn't find one that had basically just what we're talking about. As an individual basis. I know it did about fifteen years ago with somebody that said.
And if people were talking about.
But I don't know if that was legal or not, was.
There's there's not a law, you were talking about if we just could uh. Had had a sick pool. And it's like what we were talking about earlier, if I wanted to give someone, you know, it opens up. Okay, a liability of favoritism, how is it, you know, open up liability of favoritism if uh.
If you don't know who it is, right.
Did you say that Tonda had been part of?
Something.
Where there was an individual that could give to another individual in the past.
Yeah, she went and visited with briefly this morning about some other stuff, and so I had just talked to her about this and. She said she had been part of one of those before.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm. And and I'm not necessarily seeing. Do does it give you any indication in the other ones that you've looked at, who's? Who makes up this this sick leave board?
Those department heads, elected officials. They all didn't say that's a assumption.
So if they're participated in a in a fiscal year one time. Would they be eligible? Like just said, they gave eight hours one time, would they be eligible or do they have to give every month?
You resubmit every year. In the way that it's current, what's that with that, they do a yearly.
Just one time a year, you could just give one time.
No, 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 I think it's a part of your regular.
Okay.
Ongoing, yeah.
So you give some of your time every.
It's like we're.
Every meeting we have to resign to say, I want, I approve you to take eight hours or twenty-four hours to my time.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you just said it a different way. We can communicate. I just have to learn to listen better.
I know if you.
I'm deaf in this ear, can't tell.
Legal aspect, the hacker uh participate. Is there the potential a way that you could change your plan when you allocate? X amount now, uh if they get X amount of sick time per month. You could change that allocation, uh increase a little bit and give part part of that to the pool.
Our employees get eighty hours of sick time in their first year of employment.
They're front loaded.
No, it's a craze, everything we do is a craze, for about the year, it averages over eighty hours.
So before you'd use, before you'd be eligible for the pool, you would exhaust your sick leave. And your vacation and, you know, in personal days or whatever that. And then you would be eligible for. The pool. That's a lot, that's a bad sickness there.
That's right, but it's catastrophic, that's what that isn't to do with.
There's a lot of it going around.
There is, there's lots of different things.
It'd be up to the board a lot, the board had to look at.
That's the permission that. I I I'm not really on board with the sick leave pool because it fears me of the favoritism and then the lack of knowledge and the labor work for. Someone gets to help make that decision on on the condition because. Everybody's condition can be different based on how everybody's reacting to whatever they have to do. And if although it may not appear that it's a serious condition, for then it might really be.
Well, no, I'm saying depending on the department, like say someone you're through Brooklyn. They probably couldn't do what I could do without it.
I have to I have to quit telling them to go Brooklyn. Anyways, I hadn't thought about that. It says mental mentally illness too in here. Does it?
I I think when you start going there, I now definitely agree that we are getting off into areas where maybe it's.
That's.
I mean, there is a, I did. To have a healthcare provider fill out, but then we're still making a determination just based off of what they're telling us.
Gets into a whole HIPAA.
Yes, it does.
And and uh an entire host of additional regulations associated with releasing the information and to whom it goes to and.
And then who someone decides to tell, just trying to be courteous and wanting to pray for somebody, then they're. Just can't give them all that information.
Wouldn't we should be so dang easy.
It's just the world we live in, it's a litigation nation.
Because of lawyers, damn lawyers.
Amen.
You know what you get if you got a hundred lawyers all chained together at the bottom of the ocean?
I don't know.
Really good start, yeah, really good start. All right, that's probably.
That's, I just wanted to throw and put this out here because it was brought to. For to be looked at and we all something to go on, I can start, try to build from it or.
I don't know, figure something out, so. There's, that's still lobby. These. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be a common occurrence, it's not rare, it's not common either.
Right.
It doesn't happen that often. But when it does, it's there.
Wh- what about this, weren't we talking just a couple of weeks ago about a a medical um. Director from county or medical something or other, what were we talking about that judge?
Oh, we have, we have a doctor, like, don't we have?
Designated medical agent or something like that?
Doctor Davis, isn't that right?
Maybe, maybe I dedicated.
That's, yes.
There you go, yeah.
And he does inspections in uh each uh projects. Well, yeah, you know, test.
If we choose to move forward with something like this, I think you would want to ask him to participate in. Some way, I mean, I.
We need to go with the simplest plan we can come up with and then let it evolve.
I I agree with you, I I I would pursue it, but make it simple.
The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, Brandon. That's good. It's good. We know we had, I wasn't there then, but about ten years ago, we had a guy in our on, in that precinct that got bit by a brown recluse twice. It about destroyed him, really. And, um, I mean, he was, he ran out of all his stuff. Really never made a comeback from it, but I think, um, the commissioner then floated him, helped him get through it.
Well, I guess the consensus is if we can come up with a better, a simpler plan that addresses all of the efficiency, we, we come up with a different than here.
It might not be, it might not be up to what, that's simple enough.
I'm pretty simple, I can't.
We need to get a.
Not what we did, it's going to have.
Special components, that everything was.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not close to doing that, but, uh, don't, don't, yeah, it doesn't. Probably can. You know, it works, it should be.
And perhaps it would be just as easy as saying, if you have now, uh, current year or in a prior year, participated in the program that you're eligible, could be just something as easy as, as clarifying that if they have participated in the, in the prior year, um, during this sickness, the year that this sickness or injury occurred, that they're eligible to continue, you know, until such time as.
Like there's no hours.
Be great if that board had a little bit of liberty on each case. I don't know if it will, I don't know if we're on, because we're not about liberty, so, some lawyers.
Thank you. You know, you, how you keep a lawyer from drowning? You shoot him before he hits the water. I don't know if that's simple at all, um, but.
Not yet.
So where are we at? Judge?
So, uh.
So we're going to look at the vacation and the workshop again on Friday.
Right. On, on Friday, then sick leave, if, if we can find a plan, just keep doing research, if you can find a plan that's suitable for our needs, uh, that, you know, we consider it, but.
I just, I agree with you, Judge, that I think we need to look at the legal implications of the operation, we'll see what's something that we can, um, tiptoe through the minefield on the, on soonly.
Yeah, I don't, don't want to, uh, focus that liability. In other words, the plan's got to set it up, you know, to.
Remove our liability.
Right. What else?
That's all I have.
You know what? All right. Well, that's the two items on, on, yeah, the vacation policy and sick pool. The most indiscerned.
We have different.
Second, uh, we're adjourned at ten forty-five.
That's the question since we're adjourned. Uh, actually, I don't know. What else can I add?
I don't know.
That's fabulous.
That's awesome.
I might, I'll have a question.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.